Emergency staff to take care of all this. It's a serious concern. So, I read up on subdivision planning norms. It requires the key elements are adequate streets, utilities, and means of vehicular access and egress. I don't think this plan meets that. So, I hope that you all will really think about what this means for Chattahoochee Hills and the residents. Not just the ones that are right near it, but for all residents, because it's going to make huge difference in the environment. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Is that all the... Right. And at this point, we'll close the public comment period of the hearing and move to discussion. We did discuss this before the... Well, no, actually, I'm sorry. How much time does the applicant have left? I'm sorry. Apparently, you would like to address some of the...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of minutes. There were two comments, I think at least two, that I heard. Or one comment specifically about the traffic study, kind of methodology spoken by two folks that I just wanted to mention. And I have not had the opportunity to go through the entirety of the study. I just, like I said, I just got it late yesterday myself. But this will be available for the public's viewing consumption. And we can discuss it more at the public meeting, which is not a requirement, but one that we're putting on for the information of the public. But there appears to be, just in looking at a printed copy, probably 30 or 40 pages of data that has time, at specific times and counts and roads. So, I think the public, when they see the study, will have some confidence that it was done appropriately. And we also plan to have a representative from the traffic engineer here on the 15th to discuss any questions that you might have as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now, I'll close the public comment period of the hearing. Mr. Morton, would you please let us know what staff's position on this at this point is?
Staff recommends the tabling that has been requested by the applicant, subject to receipt of the traffic study, the information on water and sewer that was requested, and the presence of the planner at that next meeting.
Thank you. So, I think we move to discussion in the procedure we use is we have a motion, a second, and then we open it for discussion. So, is there a motion to accept the applicant's request to table the motion until the next meeting with the materials to be provided that Mike just mentioned?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second? Let's discuss.
Okay. Everybody.
Well, that's okay. From my standpoint, I'll give you a moment on that. But from my standpoint, I think that it makes perfect sense. The reason we've been postponing this decision by the planning commission is to get the traffic study and the other material so we could evaluate it, because there's been a lot of concern about traffic expressed. And we want to know what the situation is. We want to see what the traffic study says. We want the public to see it and staff to see it and understand what it says. It's not the only consideration, but it's an important consideration. And so, from my standpoint, we have the ability under the code to do it, and city attorney has confirmed that with a different provision that is in Article 2. So, I think it makes sense to... We've come this far. I think it makes sense to get the traffic study and understand it. That's my view of it.
I agree. I mean, it seems appropriate. We requested the traffic study, so I think we ought to hear it out. And I don't think there's ill-intentionally dragging out the traffic study. We waited for the paving to be done, so if there was appropriate road use and we can get a more accurate count of how many people actually traveled the road. So, I mean, it seems appropriate to me. And really, it was just bad timing. The traffic study just came in. Had it come in, I guess, a couple of days ago, probably talking about it now. So, I mean, I kind of agree with that.
Mr. West, I think it's an excellent idea to have that community engagement meeting. And I think it's a good idea to have the traffic engineer there, because any questions that the residents might have, they can get all their questions answered, and then hopefully they'll get them answered in a good manner where they're satisfied with the responses that are given. So, I think that that would be an excellent idea, to have that engineer at that meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Hayes. That makes a lot of sense. I'll get in touch with them and see, make sure we get a date that works out for them if we'll do that.
So, Mike, something Ms. Hall brought up is a concern. You need to really think about if there is some disaster in a community, one of these hamlets, that requires evacuation. At least on the gravel road, we've said that in the plan that that gravel road access can be used for public safety. So, there's that. But someone who lives on a gravel road, when a tree is down, I'm stuck. So, that's a valid concern. And maybe that's something Chief Rutt can address at the council meeting, just to address that concern.
Second. Is it working?
It was on, I think.
Okay. Okay. Would connection to Serenby...
I think you need to speak.
Serenby's farmettes, would that count as a... Could you connect to that? Correct.
Possibly. So, the applicant has expressed their interest in such a connection early on. I think you all discussed it. We do require easements among neighboring properties. I think the Serenby parcel, if I understand correctly, they're not actually planning on working on for some time, some, I guess, small number of years. But yeah, when that's done, we do... The city does require that developments adjacent to large properties keep easements available to connect to them in case they end up being developed, so that you create a network within the city. That requirement does not necessarily insist that those easements are improved from the very beginning, but it makes it available if the city or the developers want to do that. And so, that could certainly be done. The Serenby zoning... Anyway, we could put a... Add a condition, if you were so inclined, that this applicant improve their property whenever the time comes to make such a connection, to pave the connection or whatever has to happen. Of course, the Serenby one is behind us now. Can't put a condition on there, but we do, will require that easement.
I think there's going to have to be some conversation with Serenby as well about that, so...
Even their site plan, it... Yeah, it included, right. It included it. Without us, we didn't tell them they had to do that. And so, it's clearly something that they've been thinking about. I don't know if at the time, they were... I think they maybe were hoping to get a hold of this parcel at some point, though I don't know if at the time, they were thinking that that might be a future connection within their district. I don't know.
To the applicant, do you have any thoughts on the emergency situation, emergency evacuation, where all the residents would... prospective residents would have to evacuate immediately?
Yeah, I think the fact that there is another access road that's for the use of for emergency use, that of course would be one that I guess would require fire or police to respond to be able to unlock it. That's probably going to be the fastest, you know, if you think about something happening in the middle of the night, they're probably going to be the quickest to get there to open it up. With respect to an access point to the neighboring Serenby property, I think that makes sense. Where I've seen trouble, other governments have had trouble, that I've seen being able to enforce private agreements between parties or agreements between private parties. One function that I've seen done in several other places is, in an instance like this, the developer, the local government requires the developer to sign an easement itself and record it such that it's recorded a public record, it's an easement, it's an agreement that is in place upon the development of the adjacent property, then they would be able to step in and sign that agreement, and then it becomes a publicly recorded agreement that opens up that interconnectivity between the parcels. So, I have seen it done that way.
Thank you. It looks like something to be explored, Mr. Morton, of the emergency situation and if and what kind of connection there may need easements. There may be... Easements are typically recorded, but yeah. Any other discussion on this?
To kind of understand what was just said at the lecturn, could there be concurrency requirements placed on this parcel based on that parcel being developed enough to have that interconnection, or it doesn't really work like that?
Are you saying that so when the Serenby parcel is developed, that...
That the Serenby parcel would have to develop to a certain point, such that that road was present, connected before they could go on to Phase 4 or Phase 3 or something like that? Some sort of provision that this development can't proceed to that phase until this is available?
I don't know that we would want to prevent them from developing that, but it might be appropriate to have some sort of language where the easement is passable in some way, say, when there's development on both sides.
Probably some more discussion needed, I guess, as you're probably going to... I'm sorry. Probably some more discussion is needed on that, and we'll have some opportunity for that at the next meeting if we vote for this. So, we have a motion and a second on the floor. We've had some discussion. Is there additional discussion on the motion to have a... For some reason, I...
Deferral?
It's not a deferral.
Tabling.
Tabling the motion, excuse me, for... Until the next meeting. Tabling the...
The applicant's request.
The applicant's request for rezoning until the next meeting.
I have some additional thoughts, maybe, you know, that I'd like to share, maybe discuss pertaining to this project. One of the residents brought up, and it is something that has been pondering in the back of my mind, you know, if the property sells, does the zoning have to get redone? Or should that be conditional? Or does it stay with the property?
As a general condition, zoning runs with the land. So, it's independent of ownership.
Well, you know, we're looking at a nice drawn-out concept plan, if you will. You kind of get this visual of what you think is going to happen, and then...
Right.
Okay, we approve it, or we recommend for approval, and then it goes to council. Let's say they approve it the same way. And then, you know, six months, a year later, they decide, oh, we'll just sell it. And now, the next owner gets to essentially re-concept plan something totally different. But we have no system of control in place for that.
So, we do, to have a change of concept plan, they would have to, just like we had last month in here, right? A proposed change of concept plan for the C-15 Foundation. That's a proposed sale to a new owner. Anyone who came in and purchased this property would be bound by the same zoning the current owner is. So, in the condition, they're tied to the site plan. If they have concept plan approval, they would be tied to the same concept plan, but they have to come back for any change. A significant change that changed that would actually require a zoning modification. If it's basically the same project, they wouldn't have to go to zoning modification. But a zoning modification is the same process as a rezoning to start with. So, somebody came in and said, I don't want this Phase 4 here, I want to lump everything together, or, right, a major change in what the concept was for the development, or say they wanted it all to be multifamily, right? Or whatever they thought they wanted. That would actually trigger a process that's equivalent to a rezoning process with all the hearings and advertisements, the procedurally equivalent to a rezoning process. And then, if it were just a concept plan change, right now, I don't see the way to separate them where it would just be a concept plan change. But anyway, anytime you have a proposal that's different conceptually from the approved concept plan, they would need to come in, just like the C-15 Foundation did last month, and come in here for a recommendation and put city council for approval. And you, of course, always have preliminary plat approval anyway, so before they could subdivide anything, you would see, they couldn't really sneak it past, right? You would see and compare it with the approved concept. And if you all agree as a body, or if you all vote as a body, a majority, that what you're seeing in this preliminary plat does not sufficiently match the concept plan, does not match the concept plan conceptually, then you kick it back to the city council for a concept plan revision process. So, there are a couple of checks in the process, or somebody could do something significantly different.
John, would you mind if I asked a question about what you're talking about?
Sure.
So, under your scenario, if this approves and years go by, they start the development, but then decide to sell it, at some point, because it is a hamlet, there's a percentage of preservation that has to be done. If someone else buys it, do they pick up that preservation? Or when they replat or come back in, is that recalculated somehow?
It would be... They don't... The calculation doesn't start over. We would just evaluate where the numbers stand according to the requirements at the time for the full hamlet.
Might as well ask the applicant, are there plans to just flip this? Is this the idea?
Get it out there. What we would do is bring in builders and work with, you know, I don't have enough info I've discussed about with the applicant precisely what, but I have no plans to sort of abandon the project or just flip it. You know, I guess the economy could get really, really bad, but there are no plans that I'm aware of for that.
Well, thank you. Of course, plans change, but appreciate that clarification, at least currently, based on some of the questions. Thank you. The... One thing I want to say is that this application is for rezoning, and as part of it, one of the conditions that is proposed is to, that this also constitutes the concept plan. Now, that doesn't have to be. You don't have to approve the concept plan with the rezoning necessarily. It's with the application and what the applicant wants, but it doesn't mean that that has to happen. There are pros and cons. I think Mike has indicated some of the considerations, that when you have a concept plan that's approved, it does provide a baseline, a regulatory baseline, should we say, of some impact. But it is a... I suppose it's an option to not approve the concept plan, but approve the rezoning or not. But it is a... I just wanted to make that clarification. Well, as it is an option to say rezoning for a portion of it or not. So, we can make recommendations as the commission sees fit.
Okay.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I have some additional items that...
By all means.
...might be worth discussing. You know, with this project, there's been a disconnect for me, specifically in reference to Phase 3, which is the 40 acres north of Rico Road. And, you know, when you look at our zoning or our code, woven throughout it, through the definitions of a hamlet, you know, you have Section 6.1B, says, starts off, "Hamlet's... Hamlet districts are intended primarily for the creation of communities." It goes on through a couple of other things, and it ends to say, "To encourage a pedestrian-friendly traditional development form, which enhances community aesthetics and limits conflicts between vehicles and pedestrians." Later on, in Section 6.2-A, number 1, under clustering, "The development within each hamlet or village shall be clustered to promote walking and relationships between building users." Section 5-7, letter D, "All dwellings within a hamlet or village zoning district shall be connected by a sidewalk or pedestrian way to every civic space within the development." And looking at Phase 3, because it is separated by Rico Road, it cannot fit any of those And so, Phase 3 really looks like an eyesore to me with regards to the code. And while the rest of it fits, you know, I think Phase 3 is not a fit. It would be my opinion that we would not include Phase 3 as part of the recommendation. I mean, I guess that's open to discussion, if you like.
I'd like to have some discussion about that. I had similar concerns with Serenby Farmettes when they went in on Hutchinson Ferry, because there was a distance. Now, that doesn't apply here, but the council is now considering in the UDC update, language that would address that, when a hamlet is split by a major public road, what happens to that? Because it's not clear. And the discussion has been that every single instance can't be really identified in the zoning, otherwise it'd be like nine inches tall. But there's been some discussion about that. It's not been codified yet. But I think what I saw in a condition here addresses that concern, that the 30 acres on the north side would be limited to 20 single-family homes rather than a commercial business. So, essentially, it would be farmettes. It's a compromise on...
No, that's a lot of compromise, in my opinion. The farmettes, although across Hutchinson Ferry Road, it's also a 200-acre lot.
Yep, that's true.
And could be zoned a complete hamlet by itself. We might consider ourselves fortunate that it is only a small handful of farmettes and not a complete cluster hamlet, right? Where this is 40 acres, this is essentially a separate subdivision, completely disconnected from the hamlet itself. And just based on the verbiage in the coding, it's not a good fit.
I also agree with John. And I was wondering if the applicant, if he could explain to us exactly how you would handle that connectivity with Phase 3, with the other phases, because it is on the other side of the road.
And I wondered myself, and if you remember the last meeting, I sort of alluded to that fact. So, I asked the... When I spoke with the planner today, who unfortunately was not able to be here tonight, but has it on the 15th now on his calendar to be at, I asked him specifically that question. I said, I know, I spoke to one of your associates who's no longer there with your firm initially when he did this, and because I wondered myself, and he gave me an explanation that seemed satisfactory, I don't remember what it was. And he said, well, I don't know exactly what he was thinking when he drew this up, but he said, when I look at it, and from what I know about their code there, he said, you're going to have a couple of things. One is you're going to have presumably bike paths, bike trails over there, you're going to have golf cart trails over there, and you're going to... He said, if you look at it from a map perspective, it's... He had a time. It's like between, from X feet, from one place to the other, the average is like a six-minute walk. So, he said, we consider that walkability. So, he said, from a code perspective, from a planning perspective, that's why we see this, as this can be a part of the same hamlet. Ultimately, I leave it up to your judgments as to whether you think that is, meets what you want to see or not, but at least that he had some reasoning for it, and he may be able to expound upon that when he gets here. But at least that was what was explained to me.
No, by all means, go ahead.
Golf carts can't let people drive on Rico because of the limit.
Oh, it's more than 35?
Yes, sir.
Oh, interesting. Okay.
It's 45, and people do like... So, it is not pedestrian safe whatsoever for people to be crossing the road at that juncture.
These are serious considerations. I think it is worth getting on the table, concerns like this. We have a number of concerns from comments since January, but I encourage just to talk about any other particular concerns like this, so that perhaps when we... This comes up for a vote substantively, if we accept the motion that's on the table at the next meeting, that we can explore this even further, and perhaps your planner can help us understand the approach to it. Is there... I'm not trying... It seems to me it would be helpful to get any other issues like this that are very pressing us to the applicant's attention.
You know, it's always a fine balance, right? Between progress and preservation, you know, property owners' rights and what the rules are and what constrictions are. You know, the heart of your hamlet, you know, requires no variance. It fits within the guidelines of what we have laid out. The 40 acres across the street, to me, is a stretch based on the verbiage that's listed in the code. I mean, I guess you... We can all interpret it however we see, but I read it.
And there may be solutions to it. We don't know. But you may, your planners may have solutions to it.
I will say, I was in a super unique community last week, Fountain Hills, Arizona, different than here, obviously, southwest. But they actually had... I was on several four-lane roads. Now, I don't know the speed. I think they may have been 35, 40, but they had the caution lights that would come on when some... They had a lot of biking, a lot of walking in communities, and if somebody had a bike that they rode up to the trail, the lights would flash, the caution lights, and then traffic would notice to slow down and stop. So, super interesting. Don't know if that would work here, but it was a really interesting community, the way that everything went out.
They do that in Peachtree City quite a bit, so...
Much closer, better example.
But perhaps that's it. I don't know if that's a solution. Thank you very much. Are there other things that anyone would like to bring? General... I think large topics like that that we'd like to bring. I'm not trying to foreclose anything for if...
But John, would you have a recommendation? I mean, it sounds like it's something you feel strongly about, and maybe I do too. Is it strongly enough to make a recommendation or ask the applicant if he would consider maybe on that space, making that part of the preservation and move the development on the main side or some other...
I mean, I would really, I mean, I would feel strongly enough to say, like, to remove that piece from the property altogether, and we vote on the continuous piece of property by itself. You know, just with the, like I said, the verbiage of like connectivity and clustering, that's not really clustered, you know? That's separate, right?
Well, I tell you what, I think we should hold off further discussion of the issue until we get this substantively in front of us. We do have a motion and a second on the floor, and I would like to suggest we go to a vote at this point. Is all those in favor? And the motion is to accept the applicant's request to table this issue until the next meeting, to table the substantive hearing of the rezoning application until next hearing, pending our receipt and... pending our receipt of the actual traffic study, which we assume is forthcoming, and the other two items that we requested. And also, we would like to hear back about the public meeting. So all that's not really, all needs to be in part of the motion. The motion is really, do we accept the applicant's request to table this until the next meeting? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. At this point, we'll close that item of business and move on to the next agenda item. That, in other words, the whole public hearing is closed at this point. We have no old business, we have no new business, staff reports.
The only thing I have to report, well, sorry, I've been reporting on the ongoing DRIs. My understanding is that the DRI for the proposed 8,000-acre rezoning, the Bukhart property, that the applicant team has submitted all the materials now and is all under review by ARC and Greta. So we should expect the report and notice of decision in, I would expect a matter of weeks. We do have experience with GDOT sometimes causing delays, but the normal outside should be 25 business days after things are submitted. So I think that that DRI should be wrapped up, again, within a number of weeks. The Serenby DRI, there was another call with the ARC recently, and some materials have been submitted, but not the final package for that one. But it is on its way, and then the clock will start ticking on that one as well. So both those DRIs are in process, as I've been saying, we expect to see them in the summer. We'll get to start talking about these applications for real. We do have an application in that I expect to be on next month's agenda. It is a project that came.
Mike, just before you leave, the DRI for the Bukhart Farms development, I think, Ms. Suro, you had a question about public availability of the DRI, NOD?
Oh, right, so the.
That isn't there yet, I don't think, but all the material that is available in the link Robbie provided, could we have, the public have access to that?
Not sure, the link.
So if you go to the ARC website and look at their DRI, those files are not there, but the link that Robbie provided lists all of the files that are available, including the traffic study.
So I think, yeah, so I haven't seen, I was on vacation, and I saw an email go by while I was on vacation. I have not yet had a chance to catch up with my emails from last week. I believe that included in there is probably a copy of the traffic study, probably. And so we should be able to make that available. I know the regular, the state posts, there are two forms for starting the DRI process, Form One and Form Two, they call them, easy enough to remember. They post those. If you look up the DRI number, those forms should already be available. I don't know how long it takes them to get the traffic study up once submitted, but I believe now that that has been submitted, and so they should be putting that up on the state's website as well. That might be the link that Robbie provided, I'm not sure. But again, I believe that I've received that, and we should be able to make it available once I've caught up on some things. But the ARC findings and the Greta notice of decision, we don't expect in for a matter of weeks.
About 25 days to a month, something like that.
Something like that, if they're on time, that's right. Yeah, yeah. And so the only other thing I was going to mention is, we do have an application in, I expect it on next month's agenda, for a project that has been before, city council before, and was approved, and their approval's timed out. This is the corner up in Hamilton, right across the street from the existing gas station, Charlie's Store. That corner, two of the four corners are in Chat Hills, the other two are in the city of South Fulton. We've had a planning effort since then, so there is a framework plan that was part of an ARC process. So the Chat Hills corner on the opposite side of Highway 92 from the existing gas station is proposed for a gas station and convenience stores, a couple of fast food restaurants. And they received in 2018 from city council a rezoning to Hamlet Special District. That does not exist in the zoning anymore. When that went away, they were rezoned to historic crossroads. In the intervening time, they also received a special use permit for the gas station and a variance to allow the gas station pumps in the front. Obviously, you can see nothing has happened, so their concept plan for the development for that corner has expired, and the special use permit for the corner has expired. So they're back with applications to approve the concept plan and the special use permit for that development. Of course, the concept plan will include the entire eight acres. The special use permit is only for the gas station itself. The variance does not time out, so the variance is still in place. So you'll be seeing that, I believe, on next month's agenda.
Thank you very much.
Did you mention about the Serenby traffic study that was requested to be redone or?
So the, right, so the study that they have turned in to us was a study that was focused on the 200 acres that was subject to the rezoning, to which the condition was attached. The DRI process will include a full traffic study. So we'll get that when it goes in for the DRI review, and I expect that before long.
All right, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, meeting's adjourned.